Good evening, Sean. The appointed time has arrived. The Chair opens up the Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board at 6:30 PM. We're meeting at the Mashpee Town Hall. We'll call it Meeting Room 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. We're being broadcast live on Channels 8 and 1070. This meeting is also being recorded. It's also being streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, Welcome, everybody. I'd like to invite everybody to rise with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a set of minutes from...
She had me confused for a little while. A little delay.
We have a set of minutes from November 5th, 2025. I read them. They looked good. I don't know if anybody had any edits.
No edits.
No edits. There are some edits from the Town Planner, slight ones. So I'd accept a motion to accept the minutes of November 5th, 2025, as amended.
There'll be.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. So we have... You know what? We have a member remoting in, so we have to do it by roll call vote. Dale?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Mary is an aye as well. Thank you. Okay. We have no public hearings. In the audience, is there a matter that you'd like to speak on? Come on up.
Oh, Madam Chair, before that, though, could we do the A and R, since it's already set up for board signature?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so...
That's the Godfrey Road.
Godfrey Road and Barbie Circle, road-taking Mylar Signature. So what do we have to do? We have to just go up and sign? We've already approved it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, let's go.
All of us? Yes.
Okay, I should get extra credit for the long walk.
So we've already signed it, so why are we signing it again?
You have not. The Select Board has signed it, not the Planning Board.
Oh.
I don't...
Thank you. I know. I thought it was... Yeah.
That must be why there's all these signed here.
Okay, now, Mr. Dorsey, come on up. And just make sure you speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you at home.
My name's Timothy Michael Dorsey. I live at 86 Blue Castle Drive, Mashpee. September 4th of 2024, I had a meeting here, the Planning Board. I had two agendas. They were publicly announced before the meeting. And then there was a 20-day appeal. No one appealed. I named the Mary Ernestine Carter subdivision at the end of Blue Castle Drive, the last five homes. And then Clay encompassed them with a boundary around all five properties, so no one could ever, you know, get into Blue Castle Drive. And I also notified the Police Department and the Fight Department, as I was told. Now, I understand that... I'm asking, what is the status of the Mary Ernestine Carter subdivision now? I heard that it was not a subdivision. And Mr. Tobin has a little grin on his face. I want to know...
No, I don't. I don't have it on the agenda, and I...
Yeah, right. Well, it was on the agenda. It was all documented. I have all the legal documents. I save every single legal document that ever was, especially on Blue Castle Drive. And that's another issue that I'll be talking about also, but not today.
So I would have to... You're saying this was in September 4th. What year?
2024. I gave the education of how the Lilly Pharmaceutical family had a nanny. It was all woods, but it was recorded at the Registry of Deeds as a private way. It was all subdivided. They blazed a 10-foot-wide road into the end, a little two-bedroom ranch they built. Out pops Jamaican immigrants. They named it Blue Castle Drive. The Jamaicans, the nanny and the Lilies. Blue for the Blue Mountains in Jamaica. And Castle Drive is a prestigious road in Jamaica that leads to an ancient castle thousands of years old. Now, there's a history there. And I documented everything. I have all the documents. There was no appeal, 20 days, everything. I was on the agenda. Now I come to find out that Mr. Tobin says that there's no such subdivision. So I'm here looking for an answer.
So I'll have to research that, Mr. Dorsey.
Okay. Mr. Tobin can probably answer it quick enough. He's the Town Planner, and he knows everything. There he is with a smirk again.
Oh, no.
Madam Chair, so first of all, for the record, I am smiling because I'm a happy individual. It's not a grin or a smirk directed at Mr. Dorsey, nor his situation in any way, shape, or form. I will say that 2024 precedes my time as a Town Planner. I was not there when this purported subdivision was purportedly acted upon.
Tom Fadella was, so he was the acting Town Planner.
Madam Chair, if we could ask members of the public to kindly observe the Roberts Rules of Order, I would appreciate it.
Okay, well, that's up to me.
And I'm asking you to ask the members of the public to do that.
Yeah. So I think what I have to do is I'm going to have to look at the agenda for the September 4th, 2024.
Oh, yeah, it was all recorded. They called me the Lilies, the...
Okay.
The... Mary Ernestine Carter is no longer with us. She's buried at the Indians Cemetery. She knew all the Indians here. She's been... She lived here forever.
All right, so I'll have to...
Her niece is still on the property, and the Lilies come and visit. I'm friends with the Lilly family, actually.
So I'm going to have to... We're going to have to research that.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I can... I'll give you the whole videotape of the meeting.
I can... We can do that. I can look up the minutes. Okay.
Okay.
Now, you said there was a second issue.
Find out your research.
Well, I don't know if I'm going to put it on the agenda or not.
Okay, well, I'll just come here every...
Right. I mean, if I find something substantial, then I'll put it on the agenda. If I can't find it out, we'll get in touch with you and try to figure out what this is.
But right now, it was wiped off. I already spoke with Clay at the GAS Department. He said that Mr. Tobin came into his office and wiped it off. So...
Well, I need to do research. So you said there was a second issue.
You do your research, and I'll be back.
You said there was a second issue?
Excuse me?
Did you say there were two things you wanted to talk to us about?
Yeah, we'll get back to Blue Castle Drive another night. I don't have the documents with me tonight.
So we need to do more research before we can discuss it?
Well, Madam Chair, if I may...
Okay.
I'm happy to comment on the familiarity that I have with this concern since I've started here. So again, I was not there in 2024. The research that I did do on this is that there is no valid subdivision. That requires a valid recorded... A valid plan voted on and acted upon by this board pursuant to MGL Chapter 41, either a preliminary plan and then a definitive subdivision plan, or just a definitive subdivision plan. That plan then needs to be signed by the board and recorded at the registry. It's never happened for a subdivision of that name. If Mr. Dorsey believes the case is otherwise, he should, if he desires to return to the board, he should bring a copy of the recorded plan. We did meet, I believe, in my office about this.
The subdivision's been there since 1964. People have lived there since 1964. It's a subdivided area. You threw in the cluster development in a private road against everybody's wishes. And then she shows up one day and says, "If anything was done illegally to create Oakway Highlands, the statute of limitation has run out." Now, I live at the end of the road, the last five homes. If I was told to record it at the Registry of Deeds, which I talked to Tom Fadella, he said that that wasn't necessary. I don't know how one Town Planner can instill something in stone, and then you show up...
All right, so...
And then wipe it out.
This is why I didn't want to... I didn't want to continue.
I can take this to court.
So I'm going to table this, and I made a suggestion.
All right, well, thank you for your time. I don't want to get into a bickering. I have all the documents. I have an attorney. I know everybody here. I can get the constable easily.
I'm going to look at the minutes, September 4th, 2024, and go from there, okay? All right, Tim, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Sir, any other member of the public that would like to speak? Okay. All right, so Board Engineer reports. No, I guess we don't have any Board Engineer reports. I didn't get any.
We don't have a Board Engineer.
Do you have that later on?
That is later on in my Town Planner report.
Old business. We already did go...
Madam Chair, respectfully, though, there is another comment.
You know what? But we can do that when it's on the agenda as an item.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Actually, you know what? I'm sorry. I do need to make this comment. And it's important for the public to know. Subdivision control law is a highly regulated statute where there are, you know, very objective standards and procedures to go through. I would suspect with the high degree of confidence, the prior Town Planner, Mr. Tom Fadella, adhered to them, and I certainly know that I do.
I accept that statement. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on. Old business. We did the first item. Second is Osprey Court Special Permit Modification Appeals. Period. Signature. So it's past the appeal period?
Yes, it is, and that is exciting news. We have the decision here, signed off by the clerk. It just requires the board to sign off on it. At this stage, it requires the signatures of all board members. So I'll put the signature page on the top. The other good news is we're near finalization of the draft with the CR. Myself, as well as Town Council's Office, Attorney Robert Mills and Mark Robinson from the Compact, which has been representing the Native Land Conservancy on the open space component of the cluster subdivision, have been working through the draft of the conservation restriction for the open space that's a part of this special permit and the cluster subdivision. The... We were hoping to get it out to the state today. There's just one other kind of minor wording issue that we're navigating and getting just a little... Doing a little bit more fine tuning on before it gets sent out. So there's just a conversation that's almost complete between Town Council's Office and Mark. And I'm cautiously optimistic that tomorrow it'll get sent to the state. Now, that process can take up to and potentially even over a year to get state approval. And there will be opportunities to continue to tweak wording as the state opines on the conservation restriction.
Do I forge Karen's signature here, or what?
Oh.
I'm Brian. I'll come in, you know, maybe tomorrow.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, that would be great. You're welcome to come in anytime.
All right. Local comprehensive plan review and update. So does everybody have a copy of the plan they're comfortable reviewing? There's one. I think there's one up there. So I wanted to share with you something that Karen emailed in. It's about the vision statement. So what I was thinking of doing is maybe, you know, I did a little research myself. I was thinking of maybe passing these out and talking about them more at our next meeting.
Okay.
All right. So those are Karen's written comments about the vision statement.
Can I just ask a question? The reason for this is because it's mandated by the state, right? The local...
No.
I thought I read that.
Yes.
I read it in the statement.
Each town is mandated by the state to have a comprehensive plan, a master plan. And our regional planning commission is the Cape Cod Commission.
Right.
So they're special because there's the Cape Cod Commission Act.
Right.
Right? So they do the regional policy plan, which our local comprehensive plan is supposed to be in line with.
And it's...
So we don't go to jail if we don't have one, but we don't... We forfeit authority on certain things if we don't.
Right. Dennis had talked about that, right? And but...
It's advantageous for us to have.
This is mostly in the theoretical vision for the future kind of a plan, right? And it also allows us...
Action steps.
It also allows us to apply for grants if this is in the local comprehensive plan. Is that...
Well, I think what Mike's getting at is that if you do apply for grants and you have a local comprehensive plan, pointing to themes in the local comprehensive plan in support of a grant application is beneficial.
All right.
I mean, it makes you look like you're together. The other... Because I work in a planning office, as does Brian, when people are shopping around for like a headquarters of a certain kind of company, they often come and pull the LCP to see... To learn about the town. So let's say you were a town that wanted a sports stadium, right? You put that in your LCP, that we're going to attract a sports stadium. And then, gee, you're a developer that wants to put a sports stadium on Cape Cod, and you read in the local comprehensive plan, oh, you're a match. So it does help with predictability for developers.
That all depends if the town wants that sports stadium.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, I'm just using that as an example. Let's say we wanted to have, you know, a poetry center, and we put it in our LCP. I mean, people, believe it or not, developers do look at this stuff to see if their investment will blossom in that town. It's...
Another, if I may, Madam Chair...
Yeah.
Another benefit of it as well is it can actually come into play in 40B litigation.
Oh.
Yeah. It can be something that the courts look to as to whether or not a proposed project that's on appeal fits in with the town's overall scheme, so...
Okay, I got that.
That's good. And this, if we have a certified plan, a plan that's approved by the Cape Cod Commission, we can enter into development agreements, three-party development agreements. If we don't have a certified plan, then the development agreement can go forward.
Certified by the Cape Cod Commission. I mean, because honestly, and I know a lot of people have done a lot of work, and there's some great information in here, but there are some obvious, like pie in the sky kinds of things. It's just, you know, I mean, the statement like... And I know, because it applies to me, those over 65 may have difficulty evacuating during an event. Well, I can guarantee I have a little more trouble than Dale. But there's some... You know, there wasn't enough action steps for me in it. I was... I guess I don't know enough about it. That's why I'm asking the question, Mary, just...
Thank goodness you're here, because we're going to want you to fill in those action steps.
Okay. Well, the first one I would like to suggest is a traffic plan for that area around the proposed Trader Joe's and Chipotle and the three or four developments that are going up that just... I keep driving by there, shaking my head, saying, "How is this all going to work out?"
And you still got Mashpee Cod that developed behind that.
Right.
With all the houses and stuff they had to build.
Yeah, it's a... But that's the kind of thing that I wanted to see more.
So put it on the list.
I will, definitely. Good to know.
We haven't gotten to that page yet.
Yeah, there's a lot of pages.
Yeah.
I did try to get through some of them, but there were... A lot of it was just... And I appreciate the sentiment of it. It's just that I'd like to see more teeth.
All right.
That's great feedback.
Yeah, so I've got a lot of notes, too.
Okay.
So just don't lose them at this point. So that's the vision statement. In general, my comment about the vision statement is like it was before. It's way too long. So hopefully, we can boil it down. And hopefully, we can... There's kind of like a... Since we've last looked at this, there's been work on the Right to Clean Nature movement. And I'd like to think about how to work that into the vision statement as well.
All right.
Okay. Now, I have a question for Brian. I couldn't find the growth policy statement in here.
So the growth policy statement is a part of the RPP. And what my understanding of the requirement is that our vision statement should include and/or align with the growth policy statement.
I don't think we wrote the vision statement with that in mind.
No, and that was... So I have a number of items that aren't in your packet because they came in after the deadlines for the meeting packet to close. They will be in the packet the following week. One of which is an email dating back to 2024 from the Cape Cod Commission regarding areas to make adjustments to the draft plan.
You could send that out earlier than later. That would be very helpful to me.
I had a conversation with Chloe Schaefer today and received the email today. And I was... That, along with a number of other items of feedback that I received from department heads and planning on sharing with the board tonight. And then they'd also be in the meeting packet. And I'm also happy to, at Madam Chair's request, send them out to the board in advance, so...
Yeah, and then throw them in the packet so we all have them. But because I'll be working on these, like, on the weekends.
Sure, sure. But I also plan this evening, Madam Chair, to, like, read that email, you know, so it can help contextualize conversations.
All right, so here's the history of the growth policy statement as it's been in the regional policy plan, which is Cape Cod Commission's plan. Okay? And then here's Town of Truro, their growth policy statement. See, they all have... These... Truro and Sandwich... I'll give this one to you right now. Truro and Sandwich. What? Yeah. Oh, I got to keep one for me. They have recently approved LCPs. And they do. They have a vision statement and a separate growth policy.
There are...
It's all the same. And so that's Truro, and then this one is Sandwich. So those are just examples. And then this was my comments. I think I promised you these a while ago. Those are the comments that we sent in to the Cape Cod Commission on the regional policy plan, and it had to... It focused on the growth policy.
I mean, this does deserve a good bit of attention, right? Especially as we... I just discussed a little while ago, all those things happening around Mashpee Commons that impact traffic and that rotary is going to be tested to the gills, isn't it? Anyway, I...
Right, and I haven't read the new traffic chapter. I don't know if you've gotten that far in it.
Yeah, I got to that, and then that sort of prompted my... There was a lot about it, but not enough, what do we do about it?
Right, okay. All right, so... That's what I brought you tonight. Brian, anything else you'd like to add before I go into kind of like what our next steps should be?
Sure, well, I was hoping in general we would have a decent amount of board discussion on the topic this evening.
Okay.
To the extent that the board has started to go over... It sounds like Mike certainly has some ideas already.
Yeah.
As well, and the other board members. I know Karen had mentioned she started to diligently review the plan.
Yeah, and usually, yeah, and usually what I do is I go page by page and take comments.
Okay.
Like that. And then we go through... I mean, that's how we've been... That's how I've shared reviews of documents like this in the past.
Sure.
We go page by page.
Sure.
Four, 254 pages?
Well, if you're going to put your name on it, I'm going to go through page by... I mean, there's a lot of pages. We won't have comments, but...
Is there any... I mean, how many different chapters are there in this?
Several, yeah.
There's nine.
Wouldn't it be...
And subparts, of course, like...
Are there any chapters? We don't have to go through them all.
I haven't read them all, so I don't know.
To me, there's probably a lot of them.
Right. Do you want to go through the emails? Or do you want me to go through the structure of the document?
I'm happy... Regarding my sharing... The sharing of my comments, I'm happy to do it either at the beginning or the end. In addition to this... When you say the structure of the document, are you going to just talk, like, kind of generally about the plan, or...
Yeah, I wanted to... I kind of wanted to talk to Mike about the pieces that I think that are really important to focus on.
Okay, yeah. No, I can do... I'm more than happy to share my comments at the end.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we've got an introduction, right? And we've got a vision statement. And so what I'd like to do is what Truro and Sandwich did was have a separate growth policy. So maybe somewhere on that page, we'll add a growth policy, because they're really looking for a growth policy statement.
Where would you add it to?
Just on page I, too. You know, it says, "What is a vision?" Then we have Mashpee's visions and guiding principles. So hopefully... I don't know where the guiding principles came from. And I'm not sure that we need it if we have a vision statement. But we could have a growth policy statement.
Yeah, that's a point I would think.
Yeah.
Mary, is that separate from what's in the vision statement?
I would like it to be separate.
Okay.
I think the vision statement is kind of like a heart and soul of the town. And I get it that the growth policy statement could be inside the vision statement, but I think it should be separate.
What a...
You already said it's too long. The vision is too long, so I don't think we want to extend it. So I think maybe just separate, the vision separate.
Yeah, I think we should... They're looking for it. It's a checkbox. They have to... It's a box they have to check off. I think we should make it easy for them.
Okay.
Yeah. And we can look at what those other two towns did. We can read theirs, and then...
I think it can also be like either a subsection or in the same section as vision. So you can do like vision and growth policy statement.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what we would do, yep.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah. So we have an introduction, a little bit about Mashpee, a little bit about the process. And that brings us to page I, 14. I, 15... Michael, this is where we start with the implementation. Okay, so you start to see, you know, what are all these... Okay, so you start to see, you know, what what are all these initials? Did you want a copy of the plan? Because it's up here, there's an extra copy, okay. And it talks about what a goal, policy, and action is, the major themes, have symbols. Yep, he's taking the plunge. He's gonna take it, all right. And then we have for each chapter, an implementation plan that starts on page sixteen. So these chapters just for the public, one on housing, economic development, sustainability, natural resources, land use, heritage and preservation, open space and recreation, municipal buildings, facilities and services, and transportation and circulation. Okay? So this is an implementation chart with goals followed by policy.
What are you doing here, Mary?
I sixteen.
Okay.
I lost my pen. That's why I need my wife.
So so for each one of those nine chapters, there's there's a section that's goals, policies, and actions. So this is where, Michael, you suggested an action, right?
Yes.
So you'll have to find what page transportation's on, read the actions, and if that's not, if that's not there, then put it in.
Okay.
That's all you do.
And if I may make one other suggestion there um for Mr. Milbury, um, if you see an action that generally addresses your topic, but you think that there's a more specific topic that needs special attention, that's another way to do it.
Yep.
Is you take that general action, and it may say, study traffic in the town, you could then add to that same action with a particular focus on the traffic on Route twenty-eight near the Mashpee Commons area.
Yep.
I mean, the first goal, H one.
What page are you on?
I'm on I sixteen.
Okay, that's housing, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, ensure that Mashpee residents and its workforce have access to safe, decent, affordable, and diverse types of housing options. I don't know what to do with that, of course.
That's a goal.
That's a goal, and what's the action?
Each each goal should have, well, each action should link up to a goal, each policy should link up to a goal.
So the way it's broken down, just for everybody in the board, is it's goals, policies, and action by category. So housing, for example, is under H, and first it lists H goals, and those start at one through however many goals there are.
Right.
Then it talks about policies, then actions, and those are all numbered separately.
Right, but.
The first word of actions begin?
H, H one.
I seventeen.
On page I seventeen.
Right. And and if you have a paper copy, unfortunately, the blue banner that says actions is on page sixteen.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That's a, so it has a little formatting squiggle, so.
Definitely, color's definitely easier to read.
When you read the introduction, you know, you 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 become familiar with all the things that we did in 2022 to start this off. One was a workshop, an introductory workshop on vision. Then there was um a workshop on community systems. Then there was a workshop on natural systems, and then there was a workshop on built systems, and there was a survey, and the survey results are in the back.
Okay, so we're in goals in H one.
Oh, wait, let me just finish.
Sure.
Let me just finish, so. What I did with all this information from all those comments, from the survey, from all those four workshops, I put them all on big Excel spreadsheets and made sure that they were covered by our policy, our goals, our policies, and actions in each one of our categories. It was ours at work.
Yeah, I'm sure, was it, looks like it's incredible work.
That's where these come from, they come from either our previous LCP.
Right.
Or the new input from 2022. It's kind of like when you read them, you can tell they're kind of like chunky, and they, you know, they weren't all written by the same person, right? Because they were people's comments and quotes and, you know, maybe survey results and stuff like that, but it's all in here, it's all in here. And I mean, we can make it smoother if we want, but these are not things that we just.
You know, I mean, there's no question how much work's gone into it, but.
These were all based on either comments from uh either from previous approved plans or new comments in 2022.
So this H one, conduct a visual preference survey, are there suitable engagement activity, blah, 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 was that in the previous plan as well?
No, that was a comment um by our then-town planner. What a visual survey is to is to.
Who's gonna conduct the visual survey, Brian?
Exactly.
And we're gonna.
So, oh, wait a minute, responsibility is the second to last column?
Uh, uh, uh.
Okay? So it's PLD, AHC, PB, SB. What does PLD mean? So there's a code. PLD means Police Department, don't know why they're in there, um, the Affordable Housing Committee, the Planning Board, and the Select Board, those are the, those are the responsible parties. Now, this is a draft, right? So we're definitely gonna take out the police station, right, the police department, I don't know, that's a mistake, but that's that's what we can discuss, who's responsible for getting that done?
Wouldn't the fire department be better than the police? Because.
Well, this is a visual and preference survey um to talk about the types of housing styles.
All right, but they still have to fight about music, make sure that the fire truck can get in there, and it's not over eight hundred feet.
This is a fancy way of saying, this is a fancy way of introducing different types of densities into a town through a visual exercise. Like, would you be okay with this building in your pro- in your, me, I'd like to strike that because.
I actually would, too.
I I know where that's going.
Yeah, well, not only that, but I'd.
And that was a.
It conflicts with other goals, like if you look in the land use goals, it talks about preserving the small-town character of Mashpee.
Right, and H one contradicts that, so that was, that was a philosophical conflict that we hadn't yet resolved. This is a draft. But Mike, but as we go through this, you're gonna hear like, I want to strike that.
But and and when it gets to these actions, and you have four different categories right now, police, affordable housing, planning board, who's in charge of this?
That's a good, that's a good comment when we get to the chart, right?
Because the next one's the same, procure a consultant to assist with community engagement and facilitation of design charrettes, and it still has three different departments.
Yep.
But I'd like to find, like to be able to point the finger at Brian if he hasn't done his job.
Sorry, what, what, which part?
Just kidding.
I'm still trying to figure out where to put your traffic comment, Mike, I was trying to help you out with that, that's why I'm reading through the land use section, but which which uh which point were you referring to?
Michael is saying, under the column.
Yeah.
Responsibility.
Yeah.
He wants it to be a main responsible party.
Yeah, well, I think they're in order of, so whoever's number one at the top is the primary, primary responsible person.
So in this case, the police department is?
The police, the PLD is obviously a typo.
That is planning, PLD is meant to, so in the in the grid at the top, this is my reading of it, okay? And I wasn't here for the initial drafting, but my reading of it is that PLD, even though they said that's police, is actually meant to be planning.
Boy, is that a typo.
Yeah, whereas PD is supposed to be the police department, which is what every other municipality in Massachusetts refers to the police department as.
But in this category.
It's wrong on this.
On the chart at the beginning, so that means everywhere you see PLD, if you're thinking police, I'm pretty sure they really mean planning, because if you look at, if you look at.
And what's, so what's PLD supposed to mean?
Planning Director.
No, Planning Department, but yeah.
PLD now means Planning Department, PD means Police Department.
So I am, I am working on my own internal department red lines of this, and that's one of the first things I fixed, is that PLD means planning, and I think that was the actual intention in that it is a typo, um, because like if you look at the land use items, the overwhelming majority of them start with PLD, and there's only one that starts with PD, and I think that's the only one that even has PD in it, and I'm pretty sure that that, too, is a typo because it should be PLD, because it's reassess current parking requirements and consider how to minimize parking impacts on aesthetic quality and the environment. Maybe the police care about parking, I think the fire department probably cares about it more to the extent that it's blocking their ability to put out fires, but I think the police would probably care more about traffic and uh things like speeding and moving traffic violations. So that that probably is meant to be PLD, too. Uh, when I say PLD, too, I mean PLD as as well, T O O. And they're really, in land use, PLDs all over the place, it's PD and PLD. So I'm pretty sure at the chart at the very beginning, where it says Police Department, PLD, they really mean Police Department, PD, and then when it says Planning Department, PD, they really mean Planning Department, PLD.
Well, I want somebody at the top of the list that really is in charge and pushes everything forward on these activities.
Yeah, so I I do think that that's, sorry, go ahead.
That's why you're saying PLD is really Planning Department, and that's why it's at the top.
Yeah, so when it's at, when PLD is at the top, it means Planning Department is supposed to be the Clydesdale on it. When PB is at the top, Planning Board, although I think to a large degree, they can be interchangeable. You know, if um, I mean, if you go to the chart in the very beginning, you can see all the acronyms, so.
So we'll be spending, we'll be spending a lot of time on that chart.
What do these letters mean?
Well, if I could just finish my point, if you go to page I fifteen, that's where the chart is. So BH is Board of Health, I would even recommend a change there and just call it BOH, because that's the more commonly accept accepted acronym. BD is Building Department, PB, Planning Board, SB, Select Board, uh SC is the Sewer Commission, SD is the School Department. So wherever you see one of those acronyms at the top of a list, whoever's at the top and bold is supposed to be the Clydesdale.
Okay.
And then the remaining acronyms at the bottom of the list are, I I am speculating with a reasonable degree of certainty, are intended to be in order of their uh the degree of their contribution.
Okay, so um the the column that you're talking about, Dennis, which has S, M, O, that's timeframe.
Very good.
So what is S, short term?
Yes.
Thank you, what's M?
Medium. Medium.
What is O?
Well, so they, I'm, I I think that means ongoing, but it doesn't say anywhere, and that's another red line slash comment I have, which is we should put those definitions there as well. So I I think O is ongoing, it seems to be the case, but I'm not 100% certain.
Yeah, and what is a medium?
So for example, for example, H six is an O, and H six is regularly fund the Affordable Housing Trust to take advantage of et cetera, et cetera. I think the term regularly coupled with the O would tell me that O stands for ongoing.
And there isn't, there isn't L later on, that's, I'm assuming it means long-term?
Yes, sir.
Must be.
But L also means library in the uh.
Yeah, luckily, they're in different columns, though, because that would be really confusing if they were.
Okay, yeah. So go through a feasibility analysis to redevelop or relocate the Harbor Master Shack, blah, 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 that's an L, long-term.
The the other thing that's.
Oh, and some of these are directly from staff. I remember that, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Nope. And the other thing that's important for the board to note is on I fourteen, just before that chart on I fifteen, it breaks down the dollar signals symbols, so each dollar uh symbol.
Sorry, where does that break down?
A range. On I fourteen, if you go to section I dot V dot double I in Roman numeral caps, it's what's called the implementation table, it's the beginning of that section, and there's an introductory paragraph there, and it tells you the timeframe, so S is one to five years, M is five to 10 years, and L is 10 plus years. Again, there's no O, so we should probably just say O is ongoing, and that should be an edit there. Uh, cost estimates are based on a similar scheme consisting of a singular dollar sign is zero to $50,000, a double dollar sign is $50,000 to $100,000, and a triple dollar sign is $100,000 plus.
So that would be good if that was put in a chart, like all of us missed that.
Put that, yeah.
The timeframes, you know what I mean? Like, those should be in, that should be in a chart.
So, Brian, you should be looking if you're in charge of this, just if the S.
Yeah, you know, why don't we just say up to, if it's ongoing, it's one thing, but if it's.
Well, I hope L and O is well, Karen, unless you kicked me out of town before then.
Yeah, but why would you, why would he, why do you need a symbol here? I mean, if it's medium timeframe, that's up to five years, and why put in this, I gotta go through this symbol stuff, medium timeframe, what's, if it's immediate, then it's within the next 18 months. I don't need, I gotta go back and look at the S's and the O's and the Q's and.
Yeah, I think, I think we should approach both the dollar signs and, and this is what I've been doing in my red lines, I've been approaching both the dollar signs and the timeframes as more of a term of art and less of a science. So if I see something that's egregious, like if I see replace every town vehicle with electronic vehicles and put in charging portals and use solar panels to charge those cars, one dollar sign, that's egregious, like, we're putting in three dollar signs, because that's 100 grand plus, right? But otherwise, you know, if it's like, you know, convert one car to one, you know, EV car, and and it says a dollar sign, just leave it. You see what I'm saying? Like, if it's something extreme.
Yeah.
Let's fix it, if it's not, let's not, and the reason why I'm saying that is we're shooting for Springtown Meeting. So if we want to get this done at Springtown Meeting, you can't be too picky, we've got to be picky, but not too picky. So if you see something that's totally outrageous with those, we'll fix them, but otherwise, uh, play it where it lays.
All right, so I'm I'm in the process of making sure, I had the draft of all these actions, I'm making, I'm going through and making sure that everything that we had wanted to be in these charts, remember, Rob, we went through that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm making sure they're all in there.
But, you know, on the table.
Doesn't mean it's in stone.
With the symbols that we're discussing, you, just any one of these tables, there's no header, so you don't know even what any of those columns mean.
Yeah, the formatting needs to be fixed.
All right, yeah, good.
You know, do you put the header on every page, or?
Yeah.
Need it at least once, but I would say on every page.
Yeah.
Great.
So then after that, and we'll be spending a lot of time in that, I know, but then after that, there's a chapter, and um each section has an introduction, existing conditions. And is that it?
Yes.
Oh, and then they repeat the goals, policies, goals and policies. I'm sorry.
Economic development.
So in, so in housing, right, there's 1.1, introduction, 1.2, existing conditions, 1.3, challenges and opportunities. 1.4, goals and policies.
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
It's just each one of them.
Well, can you give me one example?
So I'm on page 1.1.
One dash one?
One dash one. So chapter one is housing, so you have, section 1.1 is introduction, section 1.2 is existing conditions.
So I'm sorry, your recommendation there is.
No, I'm just going through the the report, this, each one of these nine chapters has the same.
Structure.
Structure.
Format, yeah.
They have an introduction, they have existing conditions.
Gotcha, okay. I wasn't sure if you were recommending.
Nope.
Subtable of contents.
Then they. Then they have challenges and opportunities, then goals and policies. So each one of those has that. That's how it's structured.
That's a very astute observation.
Like planning. And then at the end, you have your appendices. Which is your references. The whole survey is in here. Eventually we'll have public comment. So what we've done in the past with things like this is we actually, we've done one or two things. Sometimes we're, we, we all read the whole thing. Sometimes we take a chapter, we divvy out the chapters. And then we go through it page by page and go through it, make the comments and then nothing's lost.
The, the chapter by chapter, like giving up the chapters seemed like a good idea. I worked last time we were.
Yeah, but that's.
Last time we did that, Karen had economic development, I had housing. Is there a chapter, Michael, that you would like, like chapter nine?
Where the chapters listed at the beginning, right?
Yep.
I won.
So.
So there's a nice one called Transportation and Circulation.
Right at the end, right? Okay. That's, I'll put my name on that.
Karen, do you want to still do economic development?
Yeah.
I'll do housing if, if that's okay. I'll also look at the Housing Production Plan so that make, making sure our LCP does not conflict with our HPP, right?
So far it actually looks, it looks pretty good.
Dennis, you want Open Space and Rec?
John.
Is that okay, Dale? Okay. Um, Dennis? Natural Resources, how about Sustainability as well? Would you do two?
I'll do two.
Okay. So that's. Unless, Rob, you want Sustainability? What do you want, Rob?
I haven't thought about this yet. Um.
So we're going to give you chapter eight then. You're the engineer, you should do.
No, Brian, you get chapter eight.
Yeah, Sustainability, I'll certainly take.
You want to do sustainability? Okay. Is that okay?
That's all right.
Well, you guys can work together anyways, if you want. Um, okay.
I'm doing the whole thing. So.
I know, but can you focus on land use?
Well, that brings a suggestion to mind. I mean, if you're doing it, Brian.
Yeah.
Why don't you set up a time with each one of us can come in for whatever time?
That's a great call with their respective chapter.
Just come in and sit down with you and okay, this is what we're going to bring to the board.
Call. I like that. Yeah. With your respective chapters, after you've reviewed them, we'll schedule a time. We'll do a pow wow. I like it. Uh, sorry. You know what, we'll huddle up.
So I think, I think both Dale and Rob want to do sustainability. Is that good? Is that okay? All right.
As long as we get the rest covered, we've got uh, chapter six.
All right. We have six Heritage and Preservation and then eight Municipal Buildings.
I don't think that's boring. And I think, I think Rob, Rob, you wouldn't like that as an engineer, you wouldn't want to do municipal buildings. I would have thought that that would be right up your alley. I'll take it.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. I owe you.
Attaboy, Rob. One for the team, but.
And how about we all do Heritage and Preservation?
All right.
All right?
And what's the timetable on this?
Yesterday.
The timetable is June 2024.
This is what I propose. I propose at our next meeting, we start an hour early, we get it out to the press, let people know this is online. We have an hour long ti- time period people can give us comments.
On the whole thing?
On the whole thing. Remember, we already had four workshops and a survey.
And that was open to everybody, right?
Everybody, your comments should be in here.
So that's going to be the one and only opportunity to.
No, we'll have a formal, you know, 30 day comment period at some time too.
Okay.
We'll have, we have to.
Well, if we're going to do a 30 day comment period, we're not making the May Town Meeting then. There's no way. Yeah, that's not happening. So. Yeah. Where, where, there's, there's 60, there's 75 days between now and when warrant articles are due.
Break out in hives. Okay.
Yeah, it's not happening.
Well, well, so what, what about starting an hour early and, and inviting the public to come and make comments?
That's totally up to the board. I mean, I'm here for the board, so.
Okay. Um, so timeframe, so.
When's the next meeting?
When are we gonna arrange with Brian?
Next meeting is December 3rd, right?
Yes. December 3rd is the next meeting. And I, because the original plan was to shoot for May, it sounds like we may be rethinking that. Um, I.
We're not, but anyways, you are.
Well, how are you going to do the 30 day comment period? I'd like to, I'd like to, let's, let's tackle that then. If we're still shooting for May, how are we going to do the 30 day comment period?
Well, 30 days from the time it goes.
Have, okay. All we have to have is the warrant article in.
Hmm, I.
Just have to have a placeholder. That's all we have to have.
When does the Select Board vote on the warrant articles?
Um, it's weeks later, weeks and weeks and weeks.
We have to have it about February 11th?
You have to have your, your, your warrant articles in by that date. But you can have, you can, your warrant article can be the, the warrant article to approve this.
Yeah, it's just in my mind, the warrant article will reference the date of the final plan. So you should have the final plan. So you would say like the February 2026 version of the local comprehensive plan.
So here's the town meeting, right? They have to have that published, that warrant, published in the newspaper by X amount of weeks before. That's, that's the last day we can change the plan because that's the day the public can come in and look at it.
Right, but it, but it won't, it, but then the, the title won't be in the warrant article because the title typically includes the date.
Well, we'll date it that date, that publication date.
But you can't then change the warrant article then. Oh, you mean like amended on the floor or whatever?
No, no, the town manager, town manager's office can figure out what date they're going to publish it in the newspaper, the warrant. That's the date of the local comprehensive plan. That's when it has to be in the library and in your office and available online for people to, to look at.
Okay. Well, that, that makes it slightly less aggressive then, which is good.
Yeah. You, you can, but you have to be very cognizant of that publication date in the newspaper.
Yeah. I mean, it's still very aggressive. But it makes it slightly less aggressive.
Then after the town, after town meeting approves it, we take it up to the Cape Cod Commission.
And they can say they still don't like it. So what do we do then?
So I.
They're gonna love it. They're gonna love it because we're going to put in the growth policy statement that they want.
Another question. They changed the thing in 20, 2025, the policy plan, right?
Yeah.
So we have to make sure.
There's not much changes.
All right. Because I don't want to say we didn't follow their new policy.
No, that's why you have the history.
All right, I didn't really.
Yeah. Cause this is, this is the draft 2025 RPP Regional Policy Plan.
Okay.
Uh, po- sorry, Growth Policy Statement. Which they haven't actually voted on, but I don't anticipate it to change.
Do you know when they're voting on it?
That control the May Town Meeting up if.
All they did was.
Yeah.
They added three words to it.
Right.
So I am going to have the Cape Cod Commission look at it before we go to town meeting. Because I, that's what we did with the HPP. I had EO HLC look at it before, you know, both this board and the Select Board uh, voted to approve it and adopt it and send it to the state. I had EO HLC look at it because I don't want us to have to come back and re-vote. So EO HLC took a look at it. There were a couple of things we, they suggested we tweaked, you know, and one of, one of them we tweaked, the other one we talked it out and, you know, I, I clarified my interpretation of the wording and they said, that makes sense. Go ahead. After checking with legal and um, it, you know, we didn't have, we didn't, they approved, the EO HLC approved our HPP in two weeks. And that's a state entity.
Yeah.
You know, so, so we're going to definitely have the Cape Cod Commission take a look before we go to town meeting.
But that, it's another step in the process too.
It absolutely is, but you know, this is going to be, we're running no huddle offense and it's less than two minutes and we need a touchdown. Now, maybe we score and win the game, maybe we don't, but we're going for it.
I went to sports. Oh, no.
I, I wish, I wish I had a good hockey analogy for you, Mike. I guess it's overtime. It's overtime and we pulled the goalie.
May, who clarified for me the schedule because I really don't understand it. December 3rd, 5:30 Public Comment, 6:30 The Meeting and what, what takes place at the meeting? When do various people go over these chapters?
Between 5:30 and 6:30, right?
I just want to give, I want to make it clear that the public will have plenty of time to come and give us their comments on this. Maybe nobody will come. I don't know.
The other thing.
In the paper?
I'd love to put it in the paper.
Yeah, I think we should put in this, if we can, next week or before the third.
Sure. I mean, I'm sure there's going to be an article regarding our meeting tonight. Um, I did have a conversation with Cali today and um, their newest hire is now covering Planning Board and Lauren has moved over to the Select Board full time. Uh, Lauren has already drafted an article um, on my presentation of this to this board or this board's discussion of it. It was in uh, last week's Enterprise and I believe uh, or I suspect I should say there, there will be an article on my presentation to the Select Board on it this past Monday. So certainly public's aware of it, but we can also ensure that it's made clear that on December 4th, we're doing a um, intensive public comment period on the LCP. Excuse me, the third.
The third.
Excuse me.
And what else do we have on that night, that scheduled that night? Do we have any public hearings?
We have the Trader Joe's, don't we?
It's on the 17th. Yeah. And also Top Spin Way will likely be on the 17th too. So I can't think of anything right off the top of my head that.
So good comment, Karen.
So we could arguably even then just do it as a regular public meeting. Because I mean, we have the time. If we're starting at 6:30 and.
I want to start at 5:30.
Okay.
Yeah. I definitely want to start at 5:30.
What happens if only one person shows up?
Then we have another hour to work on this.
Okay.
So that means each one of us are going to have to meet with you before December 3rd.
I don't, I don't think, no, I don't, I don't think so.
Oh, you're right. You won't get through it all.
No. Yeah, that's, I don't think that that's the case and here's why. The, the, each board member's red lines do not need to be finished before the public can begin commenting on it because the the point of each board member redlining things is to put in their input, yes, but also if they receive public comment that they agree with, they can put that in in their sections as well and then present it to the board.
Okay. What if we're ready to go forward with one of the chapters? Could we work on it that night, December 3rd?
No, absolutely. But so.
We have to do a growth policy, right? I mean, that's, we could do that. We should be able to do that on, we're going to write a page in one night.
Well, that's, I want to do that post Cape Cod Commission feedback, or we could do a draft and then get it over to the Cape Cod Commission, actually. Either way works, but.
Sometimes people do the vision statement and the growth policy statement after they've done all their chapters. Because then they summarize it with those two things. So we don't.
That's definitely.
The vision statement, everybody gets stuck time wise on the vision statement. It takes so long to express it. So. So Karen, good comment. So December 3rd, we'll use meeting time to continue on with our comments.
Well, what's the order? Because I want to be able to be prepared when I can.
Um, I don't, well.
Whoever's met with Brian gets to go first.
Yeah. Look, here's a thought, right? You want to have this on the agenda for every meeting between now until it's done.
But December 17th, we're not going to have a lot of time to do that.
Yeah, I don't think we should even have it on the agenda for December. I think we should skip the 17th because between Top Spin Way and Trader Joe's, you know.
Christmas.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's the week before Christmas. So I don't, I think every week except December 17th, unless we literally just cover one sentence in the plan on the 17th. But where I was going with this is other than the 17th, you want to have it on the agenda.
Well, we'll have it on the agenda on the 17th, just in case, but keep going.
Until it's done.
Yeah.
And you want to go through it in chronological order.
We can. So that means.
So that's a decision we have to make then tonight before we decide how we're going to handle the chapters.
The deal. We would, I, I think we should start with Sustainability and Natural Resources. Cause I'll tell you, we already went through housing and economic development. Because their first and second, we always spend time on those and then we run out of time as we go through the other ones.
Okay. Uh, here, here, here's the only thing though. I think it will be less confusing for everybody if we go in chronological order.
Okay, that's fine.
And if those are quick, right, then we'll get through them quickly and then just jump right into Sustainability and Natural Resources.
All right, Karen. So it's me, then it's you.
Well, what is happening? Um, what day?
So I'm going to be prepared to present my red lines on December 3rd. Just in case we get to them.
Right after public comment.
Yes.
Cause you'll be all ears on that public comment.
Okay. I, 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 I see, I see what the issue is here then. Yeah, okay. Anyway.
I shall be prepared.
Yeah, I was going to say, if that's the case, if that, if, if you want to do the jump around model, then whoever wants to be prepared on the 3rd, you know.
I don't think we should do that. I think we have so many, we have so many dates and we have to fill it with, with.
All right. We'll do, we'll do it in chronological order.
Chapter by chapter.
And that's why Rob is grinning back here because he's chapter eight.
I'm, I'm, I've got a big smile. I'm chapter nine. But even if, even if we have to rotate those through and somebody finishes first, we got to do one chapter a week, I think.
I like it. Let's do it.
Yeah, hopefully too.
We won't finish.
We won't finish.
Well, that's, that's, so that's the next question then. How much do we hit each meeting? We do one and two for the 3rd?
We should be prepared.
Yeah.
For two chapters for December 3rd. See how it goes. We did, we did do some Saturday meetings last time. They were not popular. People skipped. I think you did. I think you went. Right. They weren't popular. It was, it was almost better meeting and a different Wednesdays, you know.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I mean, the ZBA has this room on Wednesdays, but we could go upstairs and use a different room. Um, but um.
So I just had one other question then. I mean, I, I plan on going through and redlining the entire thing. How do we weave that into?
I'm going to send you.
Yeah.
My red lines for chapter one. They're going to be almost the same because most of my red lines are because of the census data.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But what I'm trying to get at is what's, how are we going to?
We meet with you.
Yeah.
We meet with you.
Yeah.
Or Zoom with you or whatever. You have the master, you have the master copy.
Then we incorporate your red lines and figure out, yeah.
Right. Your and my red, and then that is what we work off of.
Wonderful. And then what I'll do is after each meeting, when we finalize the red lines for that chapter, I'll post the updated red line version onto the webpage.
Yep. And you just, you just put the date on, you know what I mean? Like on the cover.
Oh, a hundred percent.
Just put the date.
Can I ask you a question, Brian? How much time are you spending on this now? I mean, is it a couple hours a day? Is it most of your day? Is it?
I'd say on average, a couple hours a day.
So would it be fair to say that you could meet with all of us before the 1st of January? If we take a two hour session with you somehow?
I don't know. I don't know. It's nice that some, some things in the departments, like some big things in the department got put to bed today. So that's going to free up some time. Um, and I'll share more on that, you know, in the Town Planner's Report, but uh. Um, and I'll share more on that, you know, in the Town Planner's Report, but uh, the first of, I'm just trying to think, why that aggressive if we're not shooting for the second week?
We want to get it done, and if we want to get it done by the first of May, having it red, redlined and then being able to present it to the Cape Cod Commission and then have the thirty-day period for public, it starts to get, I mean, I, I like to have some pressure for getting it done.
Oh, no, no, a hundred percent. I think probably with the meetings, um, and nine chapters, it may make sense to spread that out over, uh, well, let me think about that.
We don't have much time.
Yeah. Well, see, the key missing date and variable, I originally thought, let me put it this way, Mike, I originally thought that we were gonna have it finalized before Warren articles are due, in which case I would have said, yes, but now that I know there's extra time there, it makes sense for us to build that into-
You have to request that. Do you know what I mean?
A placeholder.
You have to request a placeholder and that will be done by the publication date.
Right, but the, that's the date that we don't know. So we don't know when our hard stop deadline is if we're not using the due date for the original Warren article as a hard stop deadline.
Right.
Because we know, we know the original Warren article date is the second week in February. We just don't know when this publication-
Then they write the warrant and then they bring it to the select board three or four meetings.
Yep, and it goes through FinCom.
Right.
So, uh, but-
So-
And, and we also, for any zoning bylaw changes, we do, we have to have public hearings. But the, the big question is, is when is that drop dead deadline for us?
You'll have to work with the Town Manager's Office, they can back.
No, I know, it's just, yeah.
Do we have to have a public hearing on this?
I don't think so, no. That's what the town meeting, I mean, the town meeting is like a public hearing on steroids, you know? The town meeting is the incredible Hulk of public hearings.
I'm in the public. Can I have a copy of this so I can, if I wanted to say something about, but the part I got-
It's gonna be a link on our website.
So people know, they can look it up. If they were coming on Mike's part, your part.
Yeah.
You know, you know, what they're looking at, you know?
Yep, and every time we meet with Brian and, and it gets redlined, that gets posted.
Well, it'll get posted, meeting, individual meeting, then the meeting at, at the public, at the planning board, and then it gets posted on the webpage. Because-
Right, so, so, so we gotta get cracking. I mean, we really gotta get cracking, so can you give me a, give me a date, arbitrary date that's, we want to meet with you and then we can, cause we have to meet with you or we should meet with you and I think it's a good idea, but, but then we bring it back to the board.
Weeks out is January one, and we have to factor in Thanksgiving and Christmas, uh, the holidays. How many weeks out is January one?
I don't have a calendar from these, about ten, right? It's the nineteenth today?
Yes.
So we got eleven, thirty, thirty-one.
November.
Forty-two, s, yeah, seven weeks. Six weeks, you're right, Dale. So, six weeks.
Yeah. For nine chapters, let's do it.
Well, I think Mary's and Karen are down the road, aren't you?
So if you double down, if you count two as one, then it's like having eight chapters, right?
Next week.
We do two, two a week, like we did last time and then-
Yeah.
I would say just like, if your week's coming up, you plan it with, with Brian to say, all right, I'm coming in, you know, all right, in two weeks, I'm doing my, my chapter. Let's, let's meet up in this timeframe.
Okay, so for this coming December third, Mary and Karen?
Yes, so we'll have to meet with you, I'll have to meet with you next week.
What are you doing for Thanksgiving? We can talk turkey.
Are you working Friday?
No. That's a hard no. I'm, I'm recuperating from having ate, eaten entirely too much on Friday.
Seventh, we have, that's Thursday, you still have another few days to get ready.
Wednesday. You're around Wednesday?
Well, I don't even know if we're open on Wednesday. Uh, maybe a half day.
How about Monday or Tuesday after Thanksgiving?
I can do Tuesday, but that's-
Are you still on holiday?
Tuesday for housing, I think I've finished housing already, so yeah. No, I had definitely finished housing already, so Tuesday for housing, yeah. Can you, can you do, can, are you ready by Tuesday?
I think Tuesday is a, I have to check.
Well, so is Wednesday a half day or is it a day off or, Thursday and Friday are off, right?
I don't work for the Town Management.
I know, but it's state, it's up by the state.
No, no, the only, the, the state holiday is Thursday. If, if uh, this building is closed Friday, that's a, that's a-
Town law.
A town thing.
Well, Tuesday's a safe day, let's put it that way.
All right, I will, I will try.
All right.
Oh, even she does the next Tuesday. There's another Tuesday.
No, because the next Tuesday isn't that, it, they have to get ready for the meeting. Do you know what I'm saying?
The red lines have to be in the meeting packet. Oh yeah, so that's the other thing. All of our meetings have to be-
Right.
Before the Wednesday, before, cause, uh-
I have to be done by that end of week because our next meeting, it's like, Thanksgiving is Thursday, Wednesday is our next meeting, cause Thanksgiving is so late. So I guess we are meeting on Tuesday.
Great.
Because you're gonna have to send out the packet on Wednesday.
Well, Hannah is, but yes. Poor Hannah. She's gonna really enjoy Thanksgiving.
All right, so I will leave it for you and Karen to figure out a time that week as well.
Yeah, that's easy, Karen, uh-
A little lost.
Karen looks really happy about everything. Karen, say something so we can see your expressions.
Oh, you need to make an appointment with, with um, with Brian for next week to do, go over the chapter about economic development.
Okay, but what about the redlining? Am I, am I looking at final versions that you have and he has?
Nope, you're gonna use the version that's in front of you and you and Brian are gonna redline it on his, in his office when you meet. And then that's gonna come out to us. It'll, it, it'll come out to the planning board for discussion on the third.
Okay.
Karen, are you able to do that or not? Honest answer, like objectively looking at it, cause the more, the more we're talking this out, I am a little concerned, you know, with the holidays, trying to-
Okay, so what day would I have to meet with Brian?
Tuesday, with all your red lines for economic development.
Next Tuesday, okay.
So can I take um, the first appointment of the day?
I mean, yeah, yes, I'll be honest with you, though, I may not even be ready by then, but I'll gonna defer to your, your red lines.
We'll be good enough.
Let me just look at my schedules if I had some appointment or something. Hold on, I'm ready for a quick.
Oh, actually, maybe I will be.
So while she's looking at the schedule, oh, go ahead, Rob.
The mechanics of, of the red line review, you have, in, in the draft that we're looking at, you have the surveys, you have the uh, three uh, days at the library where we all met, and things came out. We want to verify what came out for our particular chapters and to see if they've been rolled in properly-
Okay.
Into the chapter, and then if you see a conflict.
I have it all on Excel sheet. Do you want, do you want the Excel sheets?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So what I did was I, was I took all those, all those comments that were on the walls, all that stuff, and I typed them into an Excel sheet.
Okay.
Why, why do you need that?
I'm sorry, I-
Well, that, you know, you have a-
I'm gonna assume that Mary incorporated all of that stuff in, I mean-
Yeah, but I'm not reviewing his chapter like he is.
Oh, on sustainability.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to make a requirement if we're going this approach. Two things I'm gonna need board members to do when they come in to meet with me. The first is, your red lines are gonna have to be actual red lines. So if you do not know how to use track changes on Word, give me a call or give Hannah a call, we'll walk you through how to use that, all right?
Do we have this in Word?
I, if you don't, we will get it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. The second is, come in also with, you're gonna have to, actually, it's three requirements. Send me a soft copy of your red lines before we meet or bring it in, you know, on a laptop with yourself and bring a hard copy printed out as well. And then we will cross-reference our red lines as we go through the chapters.
So what, what, how do you want us to redline this?
So in Word, there's a track changes feature and I, I have surprised myself in the last couple of weeks, Dale knows, how many, how many people I've educated about this feature, because a lot of folks, when they do red lines, they literally go and they change it to red ink and then they put in a strike through, but all you have to do to redline a document and it's easier to then accept changes is you go up to the review tab on Word and then you go down, you hit the track changes button, correct me if I'm wrong here, Dale, right?
You get this, Dennis?
Button. And then what happens is, when you make a change to a document, just like you were editing it without track changes, it automatically puts it in as a red line.
Well, I'm gonna have to have a session with you, so put me down for another meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. In fact, what I'll do is I'll send out, this is what I'll do, it should work. I'll send out a Word version to folks with the track changes feature already set, so any changes you make will create red lines.
Now you're talking.
And so which, and, yep, okay, and you're responsible for your chapter and that implementation table? Those red lines too. Is that too much?
Action?
No, yeah, of course you're, of course you're responsible for both. So if you're doing, if you're doing housing-
Housing, I'm also responsible for the chart on housing.
Everything that starts with an H for her. So for you, it's the transportation. You know, goals, policies, actions.
Right.
It's not just the chapter, it's also the part of the implementation.
Okay.
But my recommendation is to start with the chapter.
Yeah.
Because it has the existing conditions and it will get you starting to think about-
Explanation of S's and O's and how many dollar signs.
I will send out the Excel sheets, Rob, that would, my summary of everything. That was very useful.
Okay, but the bulk of them or the significant part of them are already incorporated?
I believe so.
Right.
I believe so. Cause I would, I, I may, I- Remember that meeting we had at the senior center? We went over that list, remember? That was in twenty twenty-three.
How often are these plans produced? When was the, the last one?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Good, so it was another twenty-seven years before we do this again, right?
We told, we told the planner at that time, he was like, we can do this in a year. I'm like, no, it's gonna take multiple years.
That wasn't the first one.
No, this was the one, this was the one, Michael Richardson was on the board.
Oh, all right, yeah.
Right? And we went over to the library, cause we couldn't find another room, and, no, 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 the senior center. And we went down and we did all, oh my gosh, I tortured you guys. We went line by line, goals, policies and actions. And then they put it in, the consultant put it in the chart.
All right.
Ninety-eight, what did you say, ninety-eight?
The very fir, our first L C P was certified in nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, I was on that one.
God, I love you.
Right, we went to one o'clock, one thirty, two o'clock in the morning and people were completely, you know, the board, what is the goal? What is this? So I passed the motion, we had to end the meeting at eleven o'clock, or we had a vote to continue it. Cause I was working, I think on the big dig up, I'd be working four in the morning, so.
You were getting like three, I was asleep.
Right to work, yeah.
I was like, oh, it's horrible.
All right, so I do have a couple of things that I've already noticed, some big, high-level things. I don't think the flow neutro by law is really in here under any existing conditions. Um-
Ancient ways.
The nineteen ninety-eight plan has a lot of information about ancient ways that we need to put into existing conditions. And there's also a page, talks about the survey, I think it's I fourteen, it says, and here is a summary of the survey, and there's no summary. Did you notice that?
So I think with our current approach then, whatever sections those fall under-
So where would ancient ways go into? Open space?
I think there's a lot of categories it could go into and we could potentially make a decision as a board. Here's why. I mean, ancient ways, yeah, I think open spaces-
Open space?
Open space is probably the best, but I do think it's also potentially important to also acknowledge it in, you know, the heritage section, the D N R section.
Sounds to me like the better.
But yeah.
See, if I was looking for open ancient ways, I would look in the open space section.
Well, then, we can put the bulk of it in there, but I think it may also just need to, yeah.
Where would ways to water go?
So wastewater is presently spread throughout the entire document.
No, way, the way to water.
Oh, ways to water.
Where was it last time?
That, that would be-
That's either open space, open, open space or D N R, sorry, I put my packet away.
Ways to water. All right.
Yeah, ancient ways, ways to water, I, I think that's all in, you know, open space.
I, that's where I would look for it. Um, okay, so let's put it in open space. Where would we put the flow neutro by law? Where is wastewater in here?
So wastewater is all throughout. It's spread throughout the plan. Could do it potentially with natural resource, yeah, sustainability, good call, Dale, yeah.
And do, and in your travels through this document, have you seen anything about population, a population cap?
Through, throughout, uh, population is discussed throughout in various areas, so.
Would that go into land use?
It's possibly under land use, although land use is typically more development, focused more on, on development itself and uh, you know, zoning districts and um, you know.
I think it was in land use last time because it had to do with the buildout.
Yeah.
I think that's why it was in land use. Cause we had a select board member that asked for that. We've already gotten comments. All right, so flow neutral will put in sustainability? Ancient ways and ways to water will put in open space?
I guess so, yeah.
Are you comfortable doing the um, summary of the survey, Brian? Or do you want me to?
The summary of the survey?
Yes, so in the beginning of the, it talks about the survey.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it talks about all of our meetings and it has these things.
Well, he, you weren't around for that.
Right, I was gonna say, I think it may, it may-
The following is an overview of the results and analysis of the survey.
Yeah.
It is none.
I mean, I think it may make more sense for you to do that. Like I said, I, I'm gonna have red lines for the whole thing, but if we're talking about divying up the work for a con, a concentration-
I already kind of have a summary of the survey that I've, I always dig out whenever I go and talk about this. I'll, I'll do my best. All right, sounds good? Everybody jazzed?
Yeah, I'm trying to find my supplemental materials on this, but it sounds like it may make sense to table them till the next meeting anyway, um-
Yeah, if you find them, I'd love to hear them.
Well, I, I have a handful of emails. I mean, the other variable, I suppose, that we should work out this evening is, you know, I, I presented this to the select board and the select board is going to be providing comments as well and they plan to get us those comments by early January, um-
End of, end of the year, yep.
Yep, and I've also sent it out to all of the department heads, um, and those comments for the department heads have been coming in, in, on a rolling basis. Um, you know, I, I asked to get them by November twenty-sixth. Um, some department heads have gotten me their comments already and they're substantive, others have gotten me their comments already and they just say, it looks good. Um, others have asked for more time because they've noticed things. Uh, in particular, Bobby and D N R definitely says that there needs to be some, some reworking of the, the natural resources- of the, the natural resources section and also especially the description of, of DNR itself. And also Jess Culpits in the clerk's office has asked for more time to get us, uh, get us comments back. But I did, I did ask for a deadline there of the, of the 26. I won't, since we're, since we're breaking up the sections by day, I, you know, or by meeting, I'm not gonna go into those comments in the, in details. I just wanted to ask this board how they think we should then factor that in.
Think you should give them to us as soon as you get them.
So, yeah.
Because, because, you know, let's say Dennis is reading his chapter tonight.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? He'd like to see, I'm sure he'd like to see those comments. Because sometimes it's in there. Or it was expressed in a way that needs to be tweaked.
I will say, um, Heidi McLaughlin provided me with some very thoughtful comments.
And she's with the senior center?
Yes.
I'd love to hear them.
Oh, you want me to read them now or?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Verbatim?
No, you can summarize.
Well, it's, it's focused obviously on older residents, you know, and she, did mention that she feels strongly about adding a number of item, uh, items relating to them, especially given the fact that, you know, Mashpee's population is, uh, you know, about almost 50% for the 60 plus and over group. You know, summarizing them, she very much would like to see a needs assessment to identify the needs of older adults. Um, ranging anywhere from, everywhere from, uh, facility capacity to, you know, dealing with cognitive issues, support for cognitive issues.
That's great.
Developing a plan to expand or renovate the senior center. Um, adopting policies and practices that, uh, supports, you know, safe and inclusive living for older adults. And again, with a focus on cognitive impairment.
And just out of curiosity, who would be spearheading this?
She would.
She would. It's her idea.
Yeah, we'd have to look up the acronym there, but it may be SC.
It's CA, Council on Aging.
And then, uh, maintain fiscal sustainability for aging services by planning financially for the growing needs of an older population.
Those are good.
Yeah. She also threw this in there, which I thought was interesting. We don't do blood pressure clinics or candid coffee hours anymore.
Yep. Remember the county used to do that? The county nurse used to go around and take your blood pressure, that kind of stuff.
And then she talked a little bit about kind of current transportation, services that are already available, since the plan talks about supplementing those, so.
That's like three parts of the plan. Transportation. Facilities.
If you all want, I can also dig up that email from the Cape Cod Commission if you thought tonight might be appropriate.
That's okay. I'll read that and weep later. How's that? Is that okay? Yeah.
Alright, then I'll, I'll table the rest of the comments then and send them, send them out to the board.
Karen, any more, any other thing about the LCP?
No, I just, all I can tell you is my whole file is all messed up pages for every which way. I wish we had a giant staple to put this thing together.
We'll see Brian and get the tracker or whatever it is. Karen, we have a nail gun in the office.
Yeah, yeah, give, give Karen a binder clip.
Yeah, by the way, these are great chip clips if you have extra ones after you get through with the, uh, whatever document.
I have to learn polka too. Football, I have to learn polka. Okay, I guess we, can we go on to the next item? Okay.
Can we take a one minute bathroom?
Yes, let's take a break. We're gonna be in recess for five minutes.
My whole packet's a mess right now after that.
I can tell you, this is the last one that I'm gonna be doing.
Yeah.
Just remind me, when you do the tracker, the red lines come out red. Identifies who made the change.
Yep.
If you wanna retract.
Usually it does, yeah.
Yeah, usually there's an initial or how you wanna be identified. If you wanna retract it and rewrite it.
Yep.
I think I'm just add another change. That was my experience.
Not, not if it's a red line portion, like if you redline it and then delete that red line, you're usually starting from a fresh slate. But it will still show the original deletion for the ti-, so long as you haven't accepted that actual change. You see what I'm saying?
So I got a paragraph and I said, nah, I wanna change a couple of words. I have to delete it and then redo it. And, but yet, there'll be lines through it as being deleted and not accepted. And the final version is accepted.
Yep.
So I make lots of changes.
Well, don't.
That was one issue I used to have.
Bottom line is, don't accept anything. Just, just redline and don't accept any of your changes. You leave that to the department after things are finalized. And, and you'll be fine. Makes sense?
Yeah.
And, and just one thing, so you don't get confused, if you delete a lot, it like puts it off to the side and condenses it.
Yeah, right, right. There's a, you know, a compress, compressed symbol. What did he say before that? A lot of times it's.
I'm actually gonna step outside too.
Ready to do this again?
Alright. Can't go much longer, the Bruins start at 10. We're still on the air?
I believe we are.
I'm an LCP migraine.
The future of Mashpee is in our hands.
Excuse me.
I'll be doing this some more. I'm the, uh, the tribe's representative on the Cape Cod Commission now.
I'm so excited.
I'll be looking at these more and more.
You'll get to approve our plan. Stick up for us.
First meeting's tomorrow.
Holy smokes.
The training.
That's great.
Or is that Barnstable, did I read?
Barnstable, yep, Barnstable.
Yeah, well, good for you, you're gonna be awfully busy. Hey Dennis, you, you missed Dale's news.
I'm the Cape Cod Commissioner now, Dennis.
Congratulations.
Isn't that cool? That's really cool.
You wanna take more responsibilities now, huh? With the new baby?
New baby commissioner. Wow. Okay, so I think we're all back. Let's reconvene. Um, report on CHIR's activities. None. Town plan a report.
Okay, I have actually quite a bit to report on.
You do?
Yeah, but I will be brief on each of them. Uh, the first, as you can see on the agenda, is the OSRP RFP update. So, uh, that's the open space and rec plan, so Mike, just, just when you think you're out of the woods with the LCP, we're gonna hit you with another plan. I met with the CPC, uh, last night on this matter and I briefed them and updated them. I told them we're still on target to finalize the RFP for early January to put it out to bid. Affordable Housing Committee and Affordable Housing Trust update. I've had a couple of, uh, good conversations, uh, with Mike Sparks, uh, who's the current Chair of the AHC. And we've talked out kind of a general game plan, uh, for educating his committee members, since it's a relatively new committee, uh, who's, you know, all of the members are either new to the AHC or in Mashpee or new to affordable housing or both. Um, so we're laying out a framework to kinda get the fundamentals of the affordable housing world down, uh, as well as to, um, you know, contemporaneously introduce Barrett Consulting to help work with them to structure both the AHC and the AHC and the relationship between the two. I'm gonna put new consulting engineering at the end, make sure I don't forget to do that. Top Spin Way, uh, had a Board of Health meeting. This evening, the applicant verbally assented to a continuance of the Board of Health's 45 day, deadline, uh, to make recommendations to this board. Because I had asked them to, uh, wait until we have our peer review finalized by our engineers, uh, so that the Board of Health recommendations can include, uh, our engineer's analysis of that. Uh, we plan to put them on for the 17th for our agenda. Because they were continued by the Board of Health to December 3rd. So following December 3rd, they should get back to us with recommendations, um, based on our engineer's peer review. It sounds like kind of a roundabout way of doing it, but that's just the way the subdivision control law is structured. You know, our, our purview when it comes to the SCL and subdivisions is primarily dimensional requirements. Secondarily, our rules and regulations, and then the only other way we can condition plans is through Board of Health recommendations. So that's how you get things like drainage and. Oh, Article 5 Department red lines. This, I'm not sure to what extent folks had the opportunity to, uh, look at those red lines that are in your packet as well as the case law supporting them. We obviously, at some point in time, will have a public hearing on that. The main point of clarity that I wanted to make, both for this board and for the public, is the PENNS Working Group, which is the pre-existing non-conforming, uh, structures working group, which, uh, previously was called the Pop and Esset Raise and Replace, uh, matter. We've decided we're going to bifurcate the process of adjusting Article 5, which deals with pre-existing non-conforming structures, um, in, uh, our zoning bylaw. The reason we're doing it that way is I have technical departmental changes that I want to make that are not of a substantive and/or political nature. They're just technical departmental changes that I wanna make to update the zoning code to match current case law as well as current practices in the building department for determining when a building permit can be issued as a right for adjustments to pre-existing non-conforming structures versus when they go for a Section 6 finding, that's an MGL, uh, Chapter 40A, Section 6 finding, versus when they go for a special permit. There's, uh, one key case that's out there as well as a number of other cases that came down, uh, subsequent to that case, and that's the Bjorkland case. I won't bore everyone too much with the details, but the Bjorkland case effectively decided that if you have a structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, then that, uh, the fact, even if it's, even if the structure itself complies with all other dimensional requirements, that structure is, uh, the, the non-conforming nature of that lot makes the structure itself non-conforming. Yeah, and the general policy behind that is it, um, net effect from a practical policy standpoint, even though from a legal standpoint, it's kind of upside down logic if you were looking at it from a purely legal perspective. But the, the SJC often deals with policy and so they shape the law, uh, based on policy. The net effect of that is it more greatly empowers, uh, local municipalities on how to decide what to do with, um, the McMansion phenomenon, for lack of a better word. Um, so these updates are, my plan is to initiate them as a department and get them on for the Springtown meeting. They are purely technical. They're not the substantive updates, they're not telling, uh, the, the, you know, they're not the unique to Mashpee updates, they're not the focused on Pop and Esset updates. They're across the board, they're townwide, uh, and, and they're based on state law. So it's really, it, it's really just a general update of a technical nature. Yes.
So those are the ones you've presented us thus far?
Absolutely. Yep, and I, I planned at the suggestion of, uh, Bob Orsi and the working group, I plan on doing a quick memo and also putting them up online. And then we'll get town council to review them and then we'll schedule a public hearing. And, and do the whole formalities of getting it, cause I wanna do it as a warrant article for Springtown meeting. Then for fall, then what's gonna happen is, and this is important for the public to know, particularly people in Pop and Esset and people who are interested with the PENNS Working Group, formerly the Pop and Esset Raise and Replace is, right on the heels of town meeting, assuming the technical changes to match with state law, pass, right on the heels of that, we're gonna start opening up the working group to the public and having public workshops all in the spring, you know? And then throughout the summer, and then shoot to have the custom to Mashpee changes, um, that's, you know, focused on things like what do we do with rebuilds and Pop and Esset and those kinds of issues. Shooting for those changes to be the fall town meeting. Now, my perspective on this is as a department, my job is to focus on the technical side of things and that's why I'm bifurcating this, because I just wanna get us current with state law and current building practices. The working group is based on public input, is going to decide what to bring to town meeting in the fall for the Mashpee specific substantive changes. So that was rather long-winded, but.
It's supposed to report back to us.
Oh, no, they absolutely will. No, well, they have to by state law. If you wanna change the zoning code, all roads, you know, like, like in Italy, all roads lead to Rome. If you wanna change the zoning code, all roads lead to the planning board, so.
Does the ZBA come into any of this?
So we should send, we should send these changes to the ZBA.
Yeah, and, and, and they're welcome to, well, I mean, these changes, yeah. I mean, I'm candidly, I'm not concerned what the ZBA thinks about these changes, cause they match state law and I already talked to Dave. But I'm, I'm not opposed to sending it to them, but, you know, there, there's no, there's very little room for public comment on the changes.
This has been the hot potato. ZBA, you do it. No, planning board, you do it. You know, so it would be good to send this, this, these red lines to them.
No, but so that's phase two, the hot potato's phase two and the ZBA will definitely get looped in then. These are the technical changes.
This is a nice soft launch.
Yeah, these, these are the technical changes though, so.
Cause we have not written them a memo saying we're doing this. I mean, they probably know about it.
No, they, they absolutely know about it.
But we haven't formally said, hey, we're doing this and this is a good soft launch to let them know.
They're the ones that.
Yes.
Do all the, in Pop and Esset.
Yep.
They always get variance.
Well, the ZBA will be invited to the, the working groups that, the post-Springtown meeting working groups, right? So, I mean.
I mean, if you, I would tell you, if you present this to ZBA, as long as you talk about it conforming with, conforming with state law. They're, they're, they're down the middle.
Yeah, and I, my, my thoughts are, like, so I've been working with Dave on this.
You gotta understand the history. They wrote a zoning law bylaw change and didn't tell us. And submitted it. You know what I mean? Like, it's, the polite thing to do is to give people a heads up.
Well, how did, how did they submit it though?
Bylaw review committee.
But.
Went through.
Yep.
I know.
But there's only two ways to submit a bylaw change.
I tell people these things.
Or as a petitioner.
I know.
So how, did it, did it go to town meeting? Okay, so was it submitted as a petitioner article and the ZBA was a petitioner or did it go through planning board?
Didn't go through the planning board, Brian.
Okay, so then it would have had to have been a petitioner article, otherwise it's not a valid change.
I know. Try, try being the only person in town that knows that and trying to get everybody, you know? Town council disagreed. Town council disagreed.
If it was a petitioner's article.
That's water under the bridge. Remember the year that we had like 11 bylaw changes? And like, we had proposed one and we were like, what the heck are these? They didn't tell us about it, they'd been working on it for a long time, and one of them was the Raise and Replace.
That's why I pray to the ZBA.
Yeah, yep, so we play nice. We're gonna let them know ahead of time.
Great. Well. Well, so, I would just encourage the board to take a look at those red lines, and if they have questions regarding the logic behind it, to take a look at the case law behind, behind it, and we can have a more substantive discussion on it, as we get ready for the public hearing on it. But, I, after, you know, these will get tweaked slightly. In fact, there's already some slight tweaks that I know I want to make based on conversations with the working group after our last review, and I'm also gonna review them with Town Council's office, and then we're gonna have a final red line draft, and then that's what's gonna go to a public hearing. But, I will say this, that where it's at right now, absent minor tweaks, I am very strongly urging and encouraging this board to pass, because we're about nine years behind case law right now. And, and it's what the building department's doing anyway, and it will make it a lot-
How many years has Tom Fadale been retired? Nine years.
So, it will make, it will make, it will make things clearer for the public, for sure, so.
That's an, it is an incredible amount of work. I'm sorry I didn't get through it all, but, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Then, sorry.
And we have Island Pickle-
I wish I were done with my report.
We have Island Pickle, and Dennis has a report on Old Bonstable.
Yeah. So, I already mentioned that I met with the Select Board on the LCP, already talked about CPC. I had a meeting with Bonstable County, the housing, new housing program, Michael Dutton's baby.
Okay.
That was this morning. That was very productive. One idea that I, I expressed interest to the group on that is the concept of a wholesale that Mr. Dutton had brought up, so I expressed that we would be interested in that, or I certainly would be interested in learning more about that. A wholesale-to-retail loan program for affordable housing, where, you know, the, the program gets wholesale loans at a lower interest rate, and then provides them on a retail basis to qualified, you know, affordable homes applicants, but instead of building in a profit margin, they build in the minimum risk margin that you need in bumping up the interest rates, so it allows the home purchasers to get lower interest rates, because you're not, you know, no money's going to a bank CEO's bonus, you know? So, that's something that I thought would be interested in, in looking into. Talked about AHC, then the only other thing is, there's, I intend to submit a DLTA application to the Cape Cod Commission for Funding to do a feasibility study for the town-owned lot that's about 10 acres over here, to take a look at potential uses for it, for an affordable housing project.
Make sure it has a title search.
Yeah. Well, we can put that into the feasibility study. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. A thorough, thorough-
People are going all, doing all these things and going, oh, can we use that land for that? Let's do that first.
Next is, I've been working with Permanise on deciding whether or not to go live and conducting, I've been working with the building department, the treasurer's office, the accounting office, town manager's office, and IT, to effectively formulate a cost-benefit analysis on whether or not it's worth activating the planning portal. Either way, we are going to make adjustments to the tree preservation bylaw applications on Permanise, because presently, folks can only drop off hard copy checks in the department. Then last, but not least, drum roll, should I do a drum roll? We have gotten a signed contract in from Tyne Bond this afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Congratulations, that's wonderful. Congratulations to all of us, that's great news.
Yeah, that was actually a tremendous amount of work, but I'm glad I was authorized, at least, to explore both options with Beals and Thomas. We did put that 48-hour deadline on the table and said, you know, get rid of the limits of liability, or, or we're just gonna have to start negotiating-
And, and so you don't have any limits of liability now with this contract?
Yeah, correct, and we're actually also able to negotiate some pretty favorable wording regarding coordinating with developers, engineers, to make sure that they don't backfill, and basically sent, you know, phone in a report on, you know, hidden drainage components and pipes and that kind of stuff, so, that wording's in there, and then we ensured adequate insurance, minimum insurance limits, you know, individually in the aggregate and for an umbrella policy, and also a tail, since we're, my originally recommended an occurrence-based policy, we, and they, their coverage is, is claims-made base, so we built in a tail to protect against that.
So, they're ready to go?
Yes, sir, we are. I've already sent them Top Spin Way and Trader Joe's, so we're off to the races.
Cool.
That's my report.
Wow, well, thank you very, very much for that. That was good. Pickle, Island Pickle.
Oh, yeah, Dennis and I went out there. Do you, I feel like I've been talking too much, do you want to talk about that?
All right, it's the Dennis report, go ahead, Dennis.
Oh, it's really good, you know, it's coming along, but, he's not ready to open what he thought he was gonna be. And I meant to show you the driveway with the stone, they have the, where the water goes through, you know, where they're gonna have the dumpster, and the fire truck was gonna go down. I don't know if you noticed that, it was-
That's the straight driveway on the right side, as you're looking at it.
Yeah, what about it?
That's a nice feature, because the water drains down right there, you know?
Yeah, well, if you recall, we went back and forth with their engineers, like, three or four times, and making sure that that complied with our strict emergency vehicle or access provisions in our code, and it's funny, because when I went out there for the first visit, they were laying down the stones for that entrance, and it just happened to be, I wasn't coordinated at all, I just, I snapped some photos, because it just happened to be like, perfect timing. But, yeah, I would second Dennis's comments, I mean, it looks beautiful. Even the design, the design looks better in person than it did on paper, for the exterior structure, and the interior is just fun, you know, I mean, he's got the tiki theme going, he's got the pickleball courts there. It was not complete in time for the ribbon cutting, there is still work to do, but he is going to reschedule the ribbon cutting when everything's done, and, I mean, it's just gonna be a fantastic contribution to our community. I'm really excited about it.
You know what I like to see on the panels on the outside? Maybe some drawings of Mashpee. You know, maybe two or three of them, like, you know, different parts of Mashpee, because it's just a plain gray building, and, you know, the front doors look all right, but I think it needs something to, to spark that right out, you know?
I'm sure he'll come up with something creative.
Yeah.
I'm sure he'll come up with something creative, and we also want to see how it looks after the landscaping, but, yes. Speaking of the pickle stuff, outside the, the restrooms, he's got like, little pickle signs for signifying-
Ben's room.
Well, and women's room, but, you know, and then the locker rooms, it's like, it's, it's pretty cool. He's got, and at the juice bar, so there's two bars, one is, you know, the more, like the restaurant bar where there's alcoholic beverages, and then the juice bar, at the juice bar, which is, I think thoughtful that he didn't put this feature at the alcoholic bar, but for seats, he has swings hanging from the ceiling, you know, which makes sense if you're drinking non-alcoholic beverages, but I think if folks are drinking alcoholic beverages, that might be slightly problematic.
And then he has the beeves with the buyers.
Oh, yeah.
And they're from a, a tore-down building, the plant is down.
Really?
Rhode Island.
Huh.
Yeah, they're pretty nice.
Oh, yeah, he used, he used a lot of reclaimed wood, and, yeah, it's just, it's a really cool, the color schemes and everything, I mean, he really has the tiki island theme going. I wouldn't be surprised if, when it's up and running, you get like, cord pineapple drinks and that kind of stuff.
Do you know what is, he's selling memberships now?
Yep, yeah, they're already, they're already online for sale, and I know he's got a bunch booked up already. I don't think he's, I don't think they're fully sold out, but, you know, he's, he's selling them fast, so, good for him, yeah.
So, you have to be a member to play in there, or can people go?
It's both, so, actually, it's, it's, in terms of the pickleball play, this is my understanding, is that it's like, effectively, there's three options. One is your regular membership, two is, you know, rent by the day or the time period, and then three is that he actually has a separate section just for folks who like, want to rent out the facility, so he can keep the regular facility open and rent out, like, this smaller subsection of the facility, so, all right.
That's great.
It's great, it was a great, it was a great idea, and really excited to see it coming along. And Bill Russell's a great guy, I mean, everybody, yeah, he's a great guy. Everybody in the town-
Everything he said, he's doing, you know what I mean? He's just-
When I pulled in, he came running over and says, what are you doing here? And I said, oh, fuck. He goes, oh, I know your voice. He was like, all right, he named me loud, I know your voice.
That's great. All right, and then Old Bonstable Road?
Didn't have to put no signs there, you know, the stuff, I went by there twice this week, you know, I mean, last week and this week, I went by, since today, and I don't know what he's waiting for, to put the stop signs and the lights down, because it's kind of dangerous.
Yeah, I mean, just the lines would be so much an improvement.
You lived there, you know that.
Yeah, I mean, you drive by and like, which way do I go?
Yeah.
And people coming out or going in, like, am I in the right lane, or do I go around?
So, we're, we agree on where, what these lines should be and where they should be, but they haven't been done yet.
Right, and then, I'm not sure of the signage, but the lines-
Definitely the lines, that's what I-
Lines with-
Arrows.
But, how do we, how do we correct this?
I don't know, I went there, I met Kenny Mosses.
Right.
I think it was with you, but I met him before, and I said, you gotta put lines, so, people coming down, no-
And what did he say?
Oh, I'm gonna get them out, that, that-
Well, how about today?
Yeah, it's been weeks he's been saying.
So, there's, there's a revised striping plan, right? We met with him and with Ed-
With Ed, he advised him.
Can you push him?
Well, so I bumped into him, you know, two days before the last Planning Board meeting, and he said, the stripings come in. I didn't even bring it up, he just volunteered it to me. He's like, the stripings come in, we're just waiting for a sunny day to do it, but I checked with Dennis today, and it's not in, so, that surprised me, because I think we've had some sunny days since then. I know we, we definitely had some rainy days, but-
I don't know, the stripers came in, they paint them on.
Yeah.
No, it's a machine.
Yeah, yeah, it's not-
Three or four layers.
Can you drop him an email?
Sure.
Thanks. All right.
That's my report.
Okay, good. Board member and committee reports. Cape Cod Commission?
Nothing for me on that, and Dale should be the one with our associate liaison to the Cape Cod Commission, since he's now on it.
Would you mind taking over that report from now on?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Did you hear the news? Dale's on the Cape Cod Commission.
Congratulations, Dale. It's very exciting.
Thank you.
It's super exciting. Okay, Charter Review Committee, we meet next December 2nd. Charter Review, Charter, Charter Review, and we're closing down, we're gonna, there should be a draft of our final report, and the things that we passed at Town Meeting will be voted on in May. All right, Community Preservation Committee, we received five applications for this round of funding. Mashpee Housing Authority requested $222,000 for improvements at Holmeyer Village, that's the affordable housing, kind of near Christ the King, that white building, siding windows and doors. It's the 25% local match that the state requires, it's a $1.1 million project, so, that's-
They just had new roof put in last year, right?
They, they got money for a new roof, and that work is starting soon. They did Breezy Acres, which is on Old Bonstable.
Yeah.
And they did the roofs, the doors, the trims, that looks nice.
When I drive by there, the house, the houses are new, and they recided the whole, every-
They looked new, but they, they, the, that exterior siding-
Those houses, Bonvy, but, I don't know, but-
Yeah, that, 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 right, that material did fail, but, yeah.
These are brand-new houses, and they're stripping them down.
Yeah. And then the Affordable Housing Trust has put in an application for $500,000, and there are Realty Trusts, so they can hold that money and use it in between Town Meetings. The First Pentecostal Church, which is right here at 258 Main Street, Route 130, they're in the historic district, and they asked for $190,000 of historic preservation funding. The Historical Commission asked for $151,000 to finish off the War Memorial, the current one they're working on. They did have to reconfigure it, the bids came out like, really high, so they actually took some components out, but they still need a little bit more to finish that. And then this is interesting, the Ella and, is it Horatio? Ella and Horatio Amos House?
Yeah.
And that's at 701 Great Neck Road, so, I think, south.
South, that's right in New Seabury.
It's right across the street, so, that's a historic building. It's vacant right now, it's privately owned, they've asked for $1.4 million to rehab it.
Where is it exactly?
It's right up, almost at the corner of Great Neck Road South and like, Red Brook, kind of like.
Trying to think of where-
There's a big house right, it's right behind it.
Oh, okay.
It's right, like, right across from-
That's where I live, so I don't-
Yeah, it's right by New Seabury, it's like, right by the exodus of New Seabury.
That money from the, from the church, yeah.
So, so-
How could you donate to a church?
Right. So, Community Preservation money has been used to preserve historic buildings, including churches, because remember, back in the day, you couldn't have a town unless you had a church, and the church was Town Hall. And then the 1800s, the state legislature passed an ordinance or a bill that you had to have a separate building. So, right, but, but that's, that's the thing, some of these churches, some churches are actually used as voting places.
Yeah.
Right? So, so, what we decided to do for, for the church and for this building, because it is privately owned, is to ask Town Council for some guidance on if they're eligible, if we wanted to fund it, is there anything, you know, is there any criteria we should be looking for, you know? So, yes, that, that is a good question.
A better question is, what would be the private owner's intent for the building? Are they going to reside in it with the million bucks of town money? Or are they going to offer it up for some common good?
Rob's not referring to the church project, he's referring to-
Right, so we've gone over to the, the Amos House, which, excuse me, which is a historic building, it's, I don't think it's on the register, but, yeah, and it, it might be the kind of project that needs some help from the Historical Commission, do you know what I mean? So, we'll, we'll see where that goes. Sometimes you have a deadline, the funding deadline, people run, and they scramble, and they get stuff in, and then these conversations continue. So, Rob, I will bring that question back.
Okay.
All right, that's my report. Design Review and Plan Review. Karen?
No meeting.
No meeting for Plan Review either.
Okay. Environmental Oversight Committee?
No meeting.
Historical District?
No meeting.
Okay, I think that's it.
I got my question.
One thing, okay.
Mike asked if we could go on a walk-around at where the market's going. Is that still on board to go up and check out the property?
This is Trader Joe's?
Trader Joe's, yeah. I went there, yeah, I went to the woods to look at it, you know, but, I don't know if anybody else-
I, I went through the whole place.
I'd like to go, I'd like to go with the project proponent, and I'd like to go up to Unit A and B.
Yeah.
Yeah, John Miller sent me some pictures of the delivery truck going down-
So, I, if you get something from somebody, forward it right to Brian, so that-
I think he sent it to you.
Yep, it needs to come into our public hearing.
Okeydoke.
Yep.
Well, regardless, the truck was in, was in a precarious position, if there was another truck coming by.
Yeah, I think those pictures, those pictures were in the last meeting packet.
Don't, don't send things to individual Planning Board members, because it might not get into our official record, so, but if you get something as a, an individual, send it right to Brian, and they'll get it into our official record, I don't want to miss anything.
He did send it to you, or he told me he sent it to you.
Yeah, those, those pictures are, I think, in our packet, so, I mean, it's a good point of clarity to remind the public that that's the way to submit things, so that they're part of the hearing, otherwise, you know, board members really shouldn't consider them, but those pictures, if they're the ones I'm thinking of, they were in the last meeting packet as well, so.
But, I think, Brian, can you arrange a site visit for us?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
I would like the sooner the better, just because I know we're going to be, these meetings are going to continue, but I really don't want to be out there in February. I'd like to get out there in December.
Well, so I did email the developer on that, as well as a couple of other items. I know you and I were chatting about this before the meeting, and I didn't mention that detail to you, is that I had already emailed them about it, so I am still waiting to hear back on what dates they think. And we, I also emailed the developer about bringing in, pursuant to Mike's idea, is bringing in a representative from Trader Joe's to one of the hearings. So I'm also waiting to hear back on that as well.
May I interject? I walked through the property, and maybe the proponents could mark the boundary line between A and B. It drops off quite a bit, but I'm not sure where Trader Joe's ends and where Deer Run, you know.
I see what you're saying.
The yellow ribbons or red ribbons or something.
That would be helpful before our visit.
Just existing trees. I don't even think putting a stake in there, but give you a little idea where, where the, and then what you could see, and, you know. And if you're going to walk the property, wear long pants, because the little thorns grab your ankle. And I, I looked at, I said, oh.
Take back the idea. All right.
All right, anything else? If not?
No, I make a most of it, Jared.
Second.
On favor, say aye. Oh, we're going to do it by row call. Rob?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Michael? Karen?
Aye.
Mary's an aye. Thank you very-